All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Communications and Petitions. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communiquees. Mayor's Report. We have one item under Mayor's Report, Community Foundation Week, November 12th, 2000, November 12th through 18th, 2013. Whereas, November 12th through 18th, 2013 is nationally recognized as Community Foundation Week, when citizens across the country celebrate the impact that these crucial charitable organizations have on our communities, and whereas there are more than 700 community foundations in the United States and more than 30 in the state of Illinois. Whereas, DuPage County is fortunate to have the DuPage Community Foundation, whose vision is to raise the quality of life throughout DuPage County, and whereas the DuPage County, DuPage Community Foundation mission is to foster philanthropy, connect donors to the area needs, and build community partnerships. And whereas, the DuPage Community Foundation has been valued partner in our community since 1986, helping people achieve their charitable goals and ensuring the funds are available to benefit causes and organizations, addressing the needs of our community today and for generations to come. Whereas, DuPage County thanks DuPage Community Foundation for being an integral community partner and resource, and recognizes the great things that the foundation has done on behalf of our community since 1986. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Anunjiata Police, Mayor of City of Wood Dale, do hereby proclaim, November 12th through 18th, 2013, the DuPage Community Foundation Week in DuPage County, and urge all citizens to support the foundation's mission. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager.
I have one item. City recently hired a new Public Works Director. He will be starting next Tuesday, November 12th. He is here tonight, so if we can give a warm Wooddale welcome to Matt York. He comes to us from Carroll Stream. He's got a couple of words that he'd like to say.
Good evening, Mayor. All residents of the City of Wood Dale. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work for the city and work for the people of the City of Wood Dale. Like Jeff said, I've been from the village of Carroll Stream for the last 10 years, worked in DuPage County for the last 13 years in Public Works. I'm extremely excited about all the projects that are going on, the treatment plant rehabilitation, capital projects, and the extension of the Elgin O'Hare, or 390, as we're now calling it, through the northern part of town. So, I'd just like to thank you guys all for the opportunity. I'm eager to start on Tuesday, and I'm excited for the, to learn from the people of the city, as well as my other department heads, and get off and running. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm extremely excited to be here and to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome.
That concludes my report.
Thanks. And just as a reminder to all veterans, this Saturday, November 9th, will be the Veterans' Breakfast at Salt Creek, starting at 8:30, to follow a ceremony at 11:00 AM at the memorial on Irving Park. Next, Consent Agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the seven items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Number one.
Yes. Call Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'd like to have that one removed.
Remove number one.
Yep.
Okay.
Could we remove number seven, too?
Number one and number seven. Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question? Maybe I misunderstand the way thing is. If someone votes no at a committee level, on item, even though everyone else votes yes, I thought if it doesn't go on the consent agenda unless it's on, unless everyone votes yes. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So I will ask then, in that the case, I would ask item number three be removed off the gen, I mean, item number three.
I can remove one, three, and seven. Motion or agree? Second or? Absolutely. Okay. So next, I entertain a motion. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Take a roll call on the first one.
Is he ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Now I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda, starting with number two, in ordinance amending the City of Wood Dale Municipal Code, Article 3, Chapter 7, Section 7.308, to establish water rates. Item number four, approval of pay request final, RJ O'Neal Incorporated for the North Waste Water Treatment Plant, HSI Turbo Airation Blower Installation, and the not to exceed amount of $67,800. Item number five, approval of pay request partial number five, Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the Royal Oak Subdivision Improvements Project, and not to exceed amount of $617,343.30. And item number six, approval of change order number one, North Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase 1B. Do I have a motion?
That is, I'll make the motion.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, Committee Chairman Reports, Planning and Zoning, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and Zoning Committee, in ordinance approving a map amendment rezoning property commonly known as the Jack Holtz Property, 5 North 102 Wood Dale Road, Wood Dale, Illinois.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
I guess to Pat, if they come in with a re-capture agreement, is this going to come back to this council for approval on that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. Anything further?
No.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number two, a resolution authorizing the City of Wood Dale to enter into an acquisition agreement for the purchase of property commonly known as 200 North Forest View Avenue pursuant to Illinois Emergency Management Agency State Local Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP Assistance Agreement. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next.
Number three, approval of Arbor Woods LOC closeout. I'm assuming that's letter of credit.
Yes.
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bond has something to say on this matter?
Yeah, if you could just, if the motion or in second or agree, that it's going to be subject to final attorney review and approval. There's one minor modification to the, to the maintenance bond language, and also a couple of little items that staff needs to get worked out. So, that way it would not be required to come back to you. We'll take care of that, and it can be done.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I have some questions outside of, I don't know if those, that list that you have is the answer to my questions, since I'm not privy to that list.
Mr. Bond?
You could always amend your motion if my responses are in response to the questions you have. So if you can, you can ask questions on the motion that's on the floor.
All right, then I'll, I'll accept the amendment if the second or accepts.
I'll agree.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah. There's some confusion with the, or at least in my mind, I don't know, everybody else might be straight, but the homeowners association, that's just for the townhouse buildings. But part of my question is, I thought the, the site where the houses are at, it looks like they were going to build a townhouse unit there. And since that pond was originally supposed to be on the other side of the road, and I think it got built in conjunction with the other development that unified it, some things have changed, and I'm not quite sure, all the legalese and stuff changed with it. So, you know, that's my concern.
Mr. Bond?
It did. I'm not sure what, all the legalese, what specifically you're referring to, but the homeowner association is for the, as you indicated, so I don't, I'm not sure what else you're looking.
Well, originally, I understood that they legally filed the, the articles of agreement for the homeowners association, but the original development, there was supposed to be retention on the site where the majority of the houses are at. Now it looks like it's separated, separated out because the townhomes are on the other side of the road along with the retention. I just want to make sure that all the legal work that was done up front and the agreements that were made were all following what's happening, you know, with the changes.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, they were, and Mr. Forrest, you had a comment.
Go ahead.
Alderman Woods is correct. There is one townhouse unit that has yet to be built on the south side of Potter, but again, the, the way I understand it from the developer and you is here, if you have any questions for him. The association is strictly the townhomes. The detention pond, which is known as Outlot F in the subdivision documents, will become the property of the homeowners association. The homeowners association is just the townhomes.
Okay.
Do you have a follow up?
Well, and again, I just want to make sure, because this is a constant issue with, with developments and stuff, that sometimes tends to fall through the cracks, just to make sure that, you know, we've got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, so that two years from today, we don't come back and go, we can't force them to form the homeowners association.
Mr. Forrest?
That's just my concern.
Yes, all the documents have been prepared and recorded in DuPage County as required by law. Forming the homeowners association at this point in time, because majority of the townhomes still remain in the possession of the developer, he is technically the homeowners association. Once he gets a majority of the townhomes occupied, sold and occupied by independent owners, at that point, they will have to form the homeowners association and elect their own officers.
Go ahead, follow up. What's the trigger in the association percent, ownership percentage? Is it 80% sold, 75% sold, where the homeowners will take, kick in?
I believe typically it's about 60%.
60%?
Mr. Bond?
It's 75.
75.
75. Do we know what, what percent is privately owned now? Are we?
I would have to ask Mr. Judas.
Okay.
One, one home were out of eight, so far.
Okay.
All right, that answered. Thank you.
So that's 12%.
So that's one out of eight. Alderman Jacob?
I have some questions. I talked to John Forrest about, but I just want to make sure the attorney is going to address this. Number one, is there is a street light there on Potter that the developer put in that's never worked? And there's also one on the corner of Potter and Pine that's never worked. So I want to make sure, I was told that it will be fixed, but I want to make sure that we have something in writing that that will be taken care of.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, it will, and I did have a conversation with the developer, and that is one of the conditions, is that they, that gets resolved. So that's the, the approval is conditioned upon one of those items.
You have a follow up? Go ahead.
Yeah, the other things, and maybe these are already on your list, was the landscaping, they trenched up the, all the sod there, not all of it, but, so I want to make sure the city's not going to be the one having to re-sod or re-seed. I was told that the developer will take care of that.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
That's correct.
That's on the list, though. And then.
One more?
One final one was the pooling of the water. John, I think you said that might not even be the problem from the homes.
Mr. Forrest?
Correct. That's my understanding. In talking to the developer, that issue existed prior to the subdivision. When he paved Arbor Lane, he had to meet the existing elevations of the existing Spruce Street, so that is an issue. I plan on taking the new Public Works Director over there, just to kind of brainstorm with him, and see if he can come up with some ideas of what we might do there.
Do you have a follow up?
Well, basically, I just wanted to say that the problem there is we, there, it seems to retain water, like on Irving Park, by the wastewater treatment plant, and I want to make sure that's something the city's not eventually going to have to do. If it's a developer thing, I'd want him to fix it prior to, or if it's not, whatever needs to be done over there.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
Do we have any lots in this subdivision that is not built yet?
Mr. Forrest?
Which the developer doesn't own?
I can't hear a single family lot, somebody. I've got one. I want to say.
There's one single family lot that's still vacant.
Is that the developers', or is this someone else's?
I'm going in for permit Tuesday.
Still the developers'. He'll be coming in for permit next week.
Okay, so that, there won't be any empty lots there?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Well, just where the town, last townhome has to go up, right? Would be the empty. Correct?
Correct.
Right. The single family, the last one's coming. Okay. Anything further? Alderman Wesley? Eugene Wesley?
I, I just have one question, and I just want to verify the, the letter that we received. So there ain't a homeowners association established yet?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Judas?
My, my question is, I just don't want to be caught on a catch 22 on a detention basin again. I want to make sure that's covered. Even though there ain't a homeowners association that, we don't own the detention basin, it's still theirs. If something goes bad, that's it. Detention basin, I want to make sure it's fixed again.
There was never an intention of having a homeowners association for a single families. Okay? The reason the detention is that large is, when I came in for approval, you took away 12 townhouses, and you decided to make that all retention. Okay? After the letter of credit is closed out, the retention becomes the city's of Wooddale's, not mine. You have ownership to it. You have a bill of sale for the retention pond.
Mr. Bond?
That, that's correct. There's some terms we're working out, but yeah.
So, wait a minute, let's back, I'm not.
Hold on, one second. You want to respond to something else? Mr. Bond? Go ahead, further on the question.
And I'm, I'm not trying to start argument here, in no shape or form, but since when do we buy a detention basin on a development? When did that come about?
Since day one.
Was I not here when that was?
That was.
Or was that one that dropped through the cracks again?
Mr. Bond?
How do we call the, the date that it was originally? One of the issues we got is the, the terms of conditions of the sale and identifying that. That's one of the conditions that was part of the attorney review on the motion.
Okay. Alderman Jacobs, go ahead.
Just another question on that retention pond, when, John Forrest, when, I emailed John, and it makes it sound like the homeowners association is going to be responsible and own the pond, and now it's, that's not the case? The city's going to own the pond?
It was never the case. When they took the 12 units out of the townhouses that I had where the pond was at, when I bought that old house on Potter, and I bought that, and so I could build 18 townhouses, they took 12 away, I didn't build any. They enlarged the size of the pond because you went from four to one. The city council approved taking over the pond at that time. I lost 12 units to build on, that I paid $285,000 for this dilapidated house, which I would have never purchased. The council decided to consolidate all the ponds. And I think Marshall, oh, Marshall's here. It was Marshall Subek's idea. There he is. He brought it up to the council. Marshall, didn't we?
We need to attend Marshall.
Gotcha.
Plaining for fifth.
Marshall can't respond, and.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we're, we're, like you said, discussing is that what the bill of sale is going to include. It does include sanitary sewer system, public water system, and so forth, so I'll work with Mr. Forrest on, on verifying what all is going to be included. The city has to, once the bill of sales executed, the city has to accept that, and that's one of the conditions that the motion is made based upon.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, I'm having a hard time voting even for this to go forward until we get the, all the allegation, I mean, of the stuff cleaned up here. I mean, I'm totally confused now.
Mr. Bond?
I mean, here we are, and detention basins ours, I hear it ain't. I mean, I, I'm totally lost right now.
Well, I will assure you, we're not releasing the letter of credit until all of those issues are satisfied and the documentation relative to that has been completed, and at this juncture, that's not the case.
Okay.
There is going to be a homeowners association formed, you said, with the townhomes, is that correct? It is formed already.
What are they responsible for?
For their own maintenance or their own development. To make sure that everybody keeps the townhouses up to status, and their, and their, their parking, and we take care of their maintenance, and their landscaping and snowpawing.
Okay, so it's just on the property?
That's it.
Alderman Winger?
Discrepancies of understanding, I'm going to make a motion to table this at this time.
I would second that.
Second.
Okay. Peter? Alderman Jacob, second? All right, give me a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That passes. Table. It was two no's.
Right, two no's.
Mike and her.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
And just to clarify, we're going to table this to the next council meeting, Mr. Bond?
Mr. Mayor, are you aware that?
Go ahead, Mr. Judas.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, Mr. Judas.
Are you aware that I put up $100,000 band, maintenance band, to get this letter of credit reduced?
Mr. Bond, I'm, can you answer that? I'm not sure.
That's one of the doc, once a letter of credit is, is released, then there's a maintenance, a two-year maintenance bond that goes in.
Yeah, but I put up the bond already, a month ago, over a month ago. So I don't know what the issues are, I really don't. If I have a maintenance bond implemented already, and you're tableing something that's been done seven years ago, you want to hold me hostage on a letter of credit?
I don't think that's the intent.
Well, you know, you pushed it off last one, Mr. Mayor, and now, you know.
You know, this probably should have came to committee last week, and some of this stuff could have been ironed out before this meeting. That's probably the way it should have happened. I apologize.
I mean, this is seven years ago, you're, you're bringing up issues.
I understand, unfortunately, the vote was tabled.
And when is the next meeting?
The next council meeting is two weeks. Mr. Roy Wesley?
Why don't you throw this to committee, since we have so many questions? Instead of council?
Mr. Bond?
Well, you can take it up at the committee. It's going to be on the next council agenda for, for action. You can put it on the committee agenda for discussion and get clarification as well.
That probably would be easier.
So all you need is direction to the committee chair and the city manager to have this placed on the committee agenda next week.
Committee?
Do we, do we have to vote, do we have to vote on going to committee or no?
We've got, we've got.
Consent.
It'll be a committee next week. It'll go to committee, and then it'll go to the council for final action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. That was concluded your report. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
I don't have any report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Lazara.
Number one, I have a resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve at 538 Erman Drive. That's my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I have a question on all these check valves we are installing. If I ain't mistaken, we are installing these?
Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
That's correct. That's why we need the temporary construction easement.
Okay, my other question is, once, I'm sorry. Once we install these?
It becomes the residence.
It, it is in there that?
And they handle the maintenance.
That's all I want to make sure.
It's like we've done in the past.
I just want to make sure we are not liable if that check valve fails. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Alderman Woods?
One question, I mean, our general, the city's general rule is not to work on private property. What's the thing that triggers us to, to work on these properties? I'm okay with doing it, I'm just wondering how this gets triggered, and how some properties get worked on, and other things can't get worked on.
Mr. Murmas?
Typically, we do this in an area that could be the, a city problem or a city cause, so this is a resolution for that resident, that the city may be negatively impacting their property with our infrastructure, potentially. Thank you.
Mr. Bond, you had a follow up to?
Yeah, and that's the public benefit that the city realizes, that the item that prevents you from engaging in work or anything else on private property is there's got to be a public benefit associated with it, and there's been a determination that this provides a, that type of public benefit. So it's an appropriate use of funds, and again, they, once the construction is completed, then it's turned over to the homeowners. They're responsible for the maintenance, and, and all further responsibility lies with the homeowners and not with the city.
Alderman Roy Wesley, another question? Go ahead.
Pat, can we take all these resolutions, put them together?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
If you had them on the consent agenda, you could, but no, you've got, they're listed, so you need to take them separately in separate motions.
Okay.
No further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number two, a resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve at 543 Sarah Drive. That is my motion.
Second.
Alderman Woods, second. I take it no questions? We answered all on the first, correct?
Correct.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number three, a resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve at 537 Sarah Drive.
Second.
That is my motion.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number four, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and Morton Salt for the purchase of anti-icing agents. That is my motion.
Do you have a price on that? Jeremy?
Mr. Mayor, the price is, uh, $39,952.
Is that okay with you, amend your motion?
Can I amend that? Yeah, to not exceed $39,952.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Woods. Any questions, Alderman Woods?
Just one quick question. How many tons of salt?
800.
800 tons. And is that's how much less than we were ordering before? Did we used to order 900 and we're going down to 800, do you know?
Uh, yes, it's slightly lower this year because we have 300 tons left over.
That, I just wanted to make sure that we did lower it. All right, thank you.
You have a question, Alderman Wesley?
We usually order 13,000 tons.
All right. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number five, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Temple Display LTD for installation of holiday lighting and decorations in the amount of $25,644. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, I second it.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley started that end.
I, uh, here's the thing, um, we passed this back in May when we did the, the budget. It is now four weeks away for a tree lighting ceremony for, um, Christmas here and we scrambling here. My concern with this coming so late in the year is why wasn't it done earlier, knowing that we put in the budget in May and now we coming right to council without committee meeting. My question on this is for, for reading this, uh, reading this thing, for the price that they are saying that they are asking for, that's us putting up our lights that we buy. That's us labor. That's us labor. Okay? So, I will tell you one thing, I'm a flat no for this, but I have one question. If our staff, my question is, will our staff be able, if we vote tonight and have our staff put them up, are the lights ordered yet? And the question is, is the staff going to be able to get this up in time?
Mr. Mermish.
Uh, I think the council can sleep well at night, the lights will be up in time. Uh, as you know, we budget a lot of things come May 1 and throughout the fiscal year, those things get done. We typically don't turn on the lights, uh, until after Thanksgiving, uh, the official tree lighting's on December 5th, so we have some time. Obviously, the original estimate when we were discussing this at budget was estimated a little low, so really the council has to decide whether they wanna do this or go back to how we traditionally did it. Traditionally, we had in-house staff do it. One year, we outsourced, the council wasn't all that pleased with the outsourced that year, so I was a little surprised when the council was interested in this again, um, so that's, uh, I'd sleep well at night thinking they'd be installed by staff. And we have most of the lights already.
Shirley, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Alderman Eugene Wesley, the lights are in-house, they were ordered and delivered yesterday.
That's fine, I'm just, I just wanna make sure we're ready.
And I made sure they would be there, NAI.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the lights, making sure they're here. Mr. Manager, you know, I have to agree with Alderman Eugene Wesley on this. You know, when you're in business, it's supply and demand and for this bid to go out and, um, what was it, when did this go out for bid or didn't I go out for bid?
Mr. Ireland.
It went out in, uh, between, it would've been, uh, the bid opening was, uh, October 23rd, so it would've been 15 published days before that.
Okay, well, for something like this, for Christmas, for a company doing Christmas lights, I'm looking at supply and demand, you're looking in July to go out for this, as far as I'm concerned? Because they're looking for work in July for them to be busy in November and December. When you're going out this far out, when you're going this close, the demand's gonna be higher, so we're gonna pay a higher price. I'm expecting to see some fertilizing prices from you, uh, very soon for early ordering from our public works director, because early ordering started a couple of weeks ago, so I'm expecting to see those pretty soon too. I mean, when you look at stuff like this, you gotta look at down the road here, supply and demand. As you get closer to the project, the demand's gonna be higher. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of this this year because I'm sure we could've got a lot better price if you did in July.
Uh, I'll make a quick comment myself. When we put this in, we wanted to improve the lights and add lights. This, this bid is actually over what we budget anyways, I would just rather have our guys do it in the sake of some moving this along, but Alderman Lazara, you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, actually, a couple have been answered already, but, um, when did you start with us?
Mr. Ireland, go ahead.
Uh, July 29th.
July 29th, okay. And, and I do agree with the fact that maybe we should've gotten this sooner, um, and I know there's been a lot of, uh, things happening in the community, but my main concern was the fact, and I think, um, Jeff answered that the staff can do it. As long as the staff can do it, then I'm for the staff to do it.
So you would be voting no?
Be voting no.
Alderman Woods.
Let's see, you know, I, I agree, it would be nice that if everything was done sooner and let's hold off at least another week before we buy the fertilizer, but, that being said, what, what is, what is the cost for us to do it? There has to be a cost for us to do it. And, and just two weeks ago, we, we, we asked the city staff to cut down more trees and, plant more trees and do some more stuff, so there's a finite number of staff, how many things can we pile on them, uh, where they get them done and get them done well? There's also equipment that we have to rent to put these up too, so before I was gonna vote against it, what, what's, what's the cost of our manpower and the equipment versus what this contract is?
Mr. Mermish.
Unfortunately, I do not have that, uh, cost analysis tonight, um, however, I can say that this was, um, standard procedure for many years for public works to do the work and they did fit that into their, um, job tasks and duties. You are correct about adding some ash tree work, however, we are outsourcing some of that work as well. As I stated before, I, I wouldn't hesitate to say we can get this done, um, I just don't have a, a cost analysis on exactly how many man-hours it would take tonight.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah. I mean, does it take a week for them to, to get the lights up?
Mr. Mermish.
I mean, there's a couple of different steps involved, they usually try to get out there a little early, get the lights up on the city hall roof first, then they've got the reefs on Wooddale Road, you've got the clock garden, you've got a couple of different other sites. It may actually be a good year to, to not worry especially because we're not going to decorate the treatment plan area this year since it's under construction, so there's actually a little less setup than we usually have.
Okay.
Anything further, others, I'll call the roll. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
I, I had a couple of questions for Jeremy. With, I mean, in this bid, exactly what are they decorating? Are they just doing city hall, are they doing Irving Park, or what exactly would they be doing?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, they'll be decorating, uh, city hall, uh, the clock tower in the Shorties area, kinda split by the tracks there, uh, the RTA metro station and the 98 Prairie Lights.
Go ahead, Mr. Jacob.
And they would be using, we have to, they're using our stuff, not their own, they're not putting up their own things?
Correct. Sorry. Right, this is strictly labor. Alderman Catalano?
So this is just labor cost?
Yeah.
Wow.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yes, and, and to add to this, uh, I actually have, the, uh, the, the formal bidding process produced, uh, a cost of 80,000 for incandescent, 98,000 for LED, and that was very high. And then I, after the bidding process was finished and, and, and we didn't get any, uh, you know, uh, lower cost bids, uh, I, I went out to some of the different providers and, uh, the, the other quote was, uh, $35,472. And then two other vendors weren't willing, uh, to do the work at all, so, so we have, you know, 80,000, 35,000, and then this one at 25,000, so I just wanted to give you a little broader, uh, perspective of the costs.
Thank you. So the motion's in the affirmative, if we choose to go back to letting staff do it, a no vote. Oh, we still have more questions?
Just one question slash comment, I mean, I'd still, at some point, Jeff, maybe after
this vote, we can figure out what that is, what the, what the cost is, but just doing some quick math, what I believe would be, uh, our, our cost, we would take five, uh, city staff would have to do it five guys in 86 hours. That means put it up, and I'm assuming that cost includes taking it down.
Yes.
Right? So, city staff's gotta put it up and take it down, five guys in 86 hours to compete with that dollar amount, I'm just, I'm okay either way, but it could be nice to, to get the true numbers and, and see, you know, if we're saving and if there's better use, things we could do with city staff when we're looking at all the different things we wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Alderman Winger?
City Manager Mermish, do we have to, um, are we gonna be giving up any public works time? Does anything suffer if we have public works do the work? Um, do we stand some type of benefit by having another company do it?
Mr. Mermish.
I think the original intent when, when this was discussed was to spruce up the decorations and I don't think the dollar stretched as, as far as we thought it would. As I said before, we typically install it in-house as part of our normal operation, so it's not like we're taking anything away, this was normally what we did.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob, and then I'll call a question.
Just final, final question, do, do any of the other companies that you talked to, normally when people hire a company to do decorations, they bring their own decorations, take down their own decorations? Is, were the other companies the same way, there was just their labor?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Uh, yes, the, the one bid that came from the formal bidding process at 80,000 and 98,000 for incandescent LED respectively, that was with their product, so that gives you an idea of where it would go with using someone else's products.
Go ahead, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Sizarski?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Thank you, Catalano.
That passes.
Number six, approval of payer request, partial number 16, Maximum Construction Corp. For the North WWTP Upgrade Phase 1A Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $443,752.24. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Frank and Art. No. Frank came to motion, Art second. Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, these are, these are? Why, my question is, why is this, uh, why didn't this go committee?
Pardon me?
Did this one go committee?
Mr. Mermish.
Or did I miss it at committee?
Uh, I believe it did, but if it didn't, sometimes we do bring payment requests straight to the council just to stay current with our vendors. I can't recall off the top of my head if this one did or not.
Mr. Ireland.
Uh, yes, Alderman Eugene Wesley, yes, this did, uh, go to committee on, uh, October 24th, and, uh, I, I can't say for sure, but I think you had the only no vote. From, from the results I read, I don't know if that's accurate.
It is right. Not surprising.
Any other, Alderman Roy Wesley, you had a question, go ahead. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Number seven, approval of work directive number four, 2013 Infraction Project, Ethan Woods subdivision streetlights, that is my motion.
Second.
Alderman Roy Wesley, question?
This is just for the streetlights, right?
Mr. Mermish.
This is for the physical purchase of the streetlights and the installation of the streetlights.
Okay.
And this was with the money from the letter of credit?
Well.
Mr. Mermish?
Uh, the money was from the letter of credit and you may think the cost, uh, be high, but those, uh, ornamental lights are, uh, the big chunk of that cost.
You have a follow-up?
I'm still waiting for them to do the sod and, and the reconstruction of when they did the curbs over there.
Mr. Mermish.
Uh, they did do some restoration work in that area and some of the areas over in Ethan Woods, they did lay some sod and others, they did seed. They were anticipating the, uh, lighting work being approved and, uh, I know did not, uh, restore, um, to, to, to full restoration because they knew the lights would be coming up and there'd be some work still out there to be done.
I think you, I think they need to go back and redo some of it.
Mr. Mermish.
That's their plan.
Alderman Woods.
With all the stuff that we've done over there, are all these things coming in and being covered by the money that we did receive or are we exceeding?
Mr. Mermish.
No, the way it's, it's termed in the memo, uh, you may notice that it'll be taken out of excess funds from the project just to be clean with the project cost, but we're paying ourselves back with the money we got from the letter of credit, so everything being done over there, the street, the lights, everything is from the letter of credit.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
Um, Jeff, what's remaining over there as far as what needs to be done there?
Mr. Mermish.
They have to do some landscaping restoration and the lights. The street is done.
Sidewalks throughout the whole subdivision or?
There's some sidewalks in the 2013 infrastructure program that still need to be done that haven't been done yet, I'm not sure in that area, but I know there's still some sidewalks to be done.
Any other question? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.[1654.91]
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes, I have a resolution authorizing the City of Wooddale to enter into a renewal customer service agreement with Call One Inc. for telecommunication, telecommunications and data services. That's my...
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, second. Any questions? Mr. Bond?
I would just ask if the motion or in second or grades to make that subject to final attorney review and approval. There's a couple of little tweaks we want to have in the agreement.
Alderman Sizmarski?
I, I agree.
Okay. Questions? Roco?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, we have other business from the consult agenda. We'll start with item number one, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Euler Consulting in the not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand for design and coordination services. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
What was, we had a question on this? Alderman Roy Wesley? No, it's okay. No, don't worry.
Too late.
The Euler, number one, yes.
I had, I don't have a pocket expense. What's it mean? One and ten hundredths times the actual cost of Euler Consulting.
What's it think, Jeff or?
I'm sorry, the mic was not on. What does one and one, one and ten hundredths of the actual cost for Euler Construction Consulting? It says reimbursement expenses. It says the following out-of-pocket expenses. How, what number?
Mr. Bond?
Well, they're going to take the expenses that they're incurring and they're taking that percentage of it. And they've given you the travel, the reproduction and all their, the presentation of graphics renderings, models and so forth. And they've given the, what their schedule is.
So...
Go ahead, follow.
It's just, it's a reimbursement rate.
Could you give me an example on something like that? How that would work?
We all may do math.
Well, no, we have our finance guy here. He could do the math. Because I, it's, I mean, what, what, does the contract, could it go over the certain dollar amount of what we're saying here?
No.
Mr. Mermish?
There's a, there's a little spot, reimbursables not to exceed. I don't know if that helps or is relevant.
Well, where's that?
Right above where you're looking. Right there.
Okay.
Right. The total they have is eleven-seven if you total everything out, but we're at twelve thousand.
And how much have we paid these people already?
Brad, would you remember that? Or John?
Where's it start?
Mr. Mermish?
It stops when you stop approving contracts.
Well, I understand that. So how much have we paid for this project already? How much more are we going to pay? I, I mean, we don't have...
Mr. Mermish?
If memory serves, I think the original master plan downtown study was somewhere in the ballpark of twenty?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And that contract concluded and then the council requested that Euler work with H.R. Green for the safety improvement projects coming up so we can do the work while we're in there and get that done.
So this is over and beyond the twenty?
It was like twenty-five or twenty-six, I want to say. Mr. Mermish, go ahead.
Yes, this is over and above the original contract per the council's request to add on this additional phase with the safety improvement project.
Basically, the first part was the concept. This is part of the implementation.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roco?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Absolutely.
That passes. Next, item number three, approval of pay request, partial number one, Northwest General Contract Incorporated for the two thousand thirteen Infrastructure Improvement Project in the not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? We had...
No.
Yeah, no, that's Alderman Wesley had...
Mayor, the only reason why I...
Because it was, you voted no the first time.
I voted no.
I understand. Okay. Roco?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Item number seven, approval of professional services agreement, number three, H.R. Green Incorporated Construction Phase Services of the North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Phase One B Project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Alderman Wesley and Alderman Woods, second. Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
My only question here was, where it talks about the dollar amount, it says sixty-five thousand and then eighty-one thousand. I just want to make sure that has been corrected because it says two different dollar amounts on the same line.